Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call back to order the 2018 Calver County Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, we're here for a budget, for our FY22 budget hearing.
Back up a minute, you said the 2018?
May 18, 2021.
Okay, thank you.
And you're horrible. And, uh, well, uh, the clerk has registered that all five commissioners are in attendance. Thank you. Uh, so before I turn it over to Director Hayden, I'd just make a few brief comments tonight. You will hear that the FY22 operating budget is up about $8 million to $373 million. Uh, not that long ago, if you'd have told me we were at that number, I would have said you're crazy for the little Calver County. But here we are. And, um, so tonight, uh, we're, the director's gonna go through the budget. Um, and I just wanna highlight a few items. Uh, the small tax cut that we implemented last year continues into this year. Uh, we capped the CIP to try to protect our long-term finances and cap the bond repayments that we have in the future. Uh, we've added additional EMS crews to support the volunteers in the county. I think, uh, there's two new crews in the budget. Uh, we implemented a plan to extend broadband, a broadband to all residences in Calver County, and we're on a schedule to have that done in about a year. So, uh, those are all items of interest that I think you'll see, uh, in the presentation that's in the book. Uh, today in our meeting, we approved an adjustment to the FY21 budget of about 12.9 million surplus. Uh, we, and that surplus was due to unexpected revenues from property tax. The first district was reassessed from income tax and from expense savings. Uh, this was quite an interesting year because of COVID, um, a lot of, uh, grants and funding coming from state and federal levels. There's also some savings because government was, uh, a little quiet there for a while about this time last year. So, uh, it was quite, quite a different, different time this year, one that we hope we don't see again. And, uh, today, we did approve that budget adjustment and, you know, we did a diverse, uh, use of those funds. We covered some holes in the budget for unexpected costs, uh, especially at the Ward Recreational Park. Uh, we, uh, reduced the, uh, CIP, uh, out-year cost by, uh, doing pay-go on the Harity Brown Community Center in Prince Frederick. And we put about 25% of that surplus in the rainy day fund. I think that brings our rainy day fund now up into the 30 million range. So, uh...
Thirty-three, I think it was.
Yes, yes. So, uh, those are some items of interest that I thought I would highlight before we get started. Um, just wanna welcome everybody here and appreciate your attendance at this time. And at that, this time, I'll turn it over to Director Hayden.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Hayden, the Director of Finance and Budget for Calver County Government. We're here to review the second budget that gets prepared in our budgeting process tonight. The first budget is the staff recommended budget. We had a public hearing for that back in March. The Board of County Commissioners took the staff recommended budget and working with our staff and management made changes to it. We're here tonight to review the almost final budget, and I say almost final because even this one is subject to the board's changes right up to the adoption date. Like to welcome everyone for being here. Uh, this is the agenda for the evening. Commissioner Hans, if you had any more comments, uh, this is the, the time.
I think it's important what you're gonna say and not what I'm gonna say.
Here we go. Uh, uh, we're here to discuss the fiscal 2022 budget and provide information to the public. We appreciate feedback from the public, and towards the end of this presentation, we'll open the hearing for that feedback. Our local law requires this hearing. We're here to satisfy the public hearing requirements of the constant yield tax rates. And we're here to present proposed changes to solid waste and planning and zoning rates and fees. We're presenting at a very high level tonight. If you want details, please consult the budget document. And if you want more details, please contact our offices, even if the question is where to find something in the 600-page budget document. All the contact information for staff and departments are on the county's website. The constant yield tax rate is the real property tax rate a jurisdiction would need to impose to generate the same amount of property tax revenue in the upcoming fiscal year as it did in the current fiscal year. So the tax rate that we would need to bill for next year '22 to get the same amount of money that we received this year in '21. And those rates are different because of changes in property assessments. In a rising or increasing assessment environment, we would have to lower our property tax rate to keep our property tax income the same. If you live in Chesapeake Beach or North Beach, you'll see a different tax rate on the line up there. Uh, the commissioners acknowledged the town taxes that are paid by the residents and the services that are provided by the towns by this lower rate. The commissioners set a differential amount and it's .336. And you can see that difference between the county's proposed rate of .927 and the rates in the towns, the proposed rates of .591. And those are the proposed property tax rates in our fiscal year '22 budget. I'm going to present three more slides, and all three are meant to inform the board and the public that we're experiencing an influx of funding that we should not build into our base budget. That, that's six trillion. Uh, I was thinking back when I first started working, I was contracting at Department of Labor. And I think the, uh, Social Security Trust Fund at that point had about 40 billion, and I, I couldn't believe that number when I saw it. That, this one is, this one is six trillion. Uh, so I've seen higher and lower stimulus amounts and, uh, quoted in the press. But this was the headline when I was working on the presentation. There's never been federal stimulus like this, and no one knows what all the impacts will be. I've never been less certain of a revenue forecast. The good news is that in the near term, the primary risk is that the revenues will be higher than they are in the budget. Yeah, I believe our income tax revenue is being impacted by the federal stimulus. Seems obvious. We have federal contractors benefiting from additional stimulus money. Savings rates are up, and some of that money's being invested in equities, creating market value appreciation, and likely increase in capital gains. Unemployment benefits were increased with this money, and unemployment insurance was taxable until just recently. Now the concern is how the refund of the taxes on that unemployment insurance is gonna impact our near-term income tax receipts. In the short term, the impact of the stimulus to the county finances is very positive. We were and will be able to pay some of our operating expenses with stimulus money. Longer term, what are the impacts and what happens if or when the stimulus stops? How will it impact inflation? Because everything we do is sensitive to inflation, salaries, the commodity costs for the CIP kinda, uh, uh, capital improvement plan projects that we have. Uh, how will it impact employment and investment markets? Because those will directly impact our income taxes. And future income, future interest rates are a big one for us. Uh, property values are impacted by mortgage rates. And our borrowing costs will, will impact our ability to fund the capital projects budget. On the other hand, rising rates will help our operating investment interest income. So there's always, uh, always multiple moving parts. This is an income tax forecast for the county, and actually, it's three income tax forecasts for the county. Due to all the uncertainty, a range of projections was the way, right way to present this information tonight. Remember that this money comes from the roughly 41,000 tax returns filed by our residents. It's distributed by the state to the county with data that's a couple of years old. So tracking the income tax revenue and projecting it can be very difficult. I went back to the 90s and did not see a change as large as the change from '20 to '21 that you see there, from 94.4 to 111 million. That's 17 and a half percent. Note that '21 and all the numbers, uh, into the future are projections. So starting at the bottom, the red line would assume that the projected '21 results were a one-off. Um, no lasting impact, we'll be back on trend. Historically, income taxes increase about 4% a year. The green line assumes we've reset the base, a new level of income tax do and at least, do at least impart to the federal stimulus. You can see how that number stays up high. The blue line splits the difference with a bias towards a, the more conservative number. And that's the number we're using in our estimates. The estimate shows a $15 million difference as soon as '23 between the green and the red lines. One reason this is important, the board is currently working on a funding formula with both the Board of Education and the Sheriff's Office. And that difference would heavily influence the affordability of either of those formulas. So my last slide, uh, and again, everything is very good right now. We should not build expenses into the base that count on the current level of revenues. This graph shows the total general fund revenue year-over-year increases. Um, and with input from Commissioner Hutchins, we broke out the impact of Dominion by showing the year-over-year change in the Dominion pilot as the red portion of the bar. So in 2018, our general fund revenues increased by 32,493,000. And the red portion of that bar shows that 25 million of that increase was related to the Dominion pilot. Moving forward on the timeline, you can see the numbers changing, but the same concept applies. In '19, an increase of 17,296,000, uh, to the general fund revenues, and about 10 million of that was from the Dominion pilot. Another increase in '20, and for the Dominion pilot, another increase in '21. Until you get to tonight's budget, the commissioner's, uh, '22 budget. In '22, you'll see a decrease in the Dominion revenues, as you will in '23, and they're very small decreases, um, until you get to '24. In '24, that's when our fixed payment pilot becomes a tax credit. The revenue will be based on the assessed value of the facility. And that assessment work is in the early stages with the state right now. But this forecast projects a drop of about 15 million to the Dominion revenues with our total revenues projected to be lower in '24 by the 6,979,000. And so our next presenter for the evening is Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Budget.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening, everyone. I will be presenting information on the general fund. In the general fund, we collect property taxes and income taxes and account for that money that was collected. Calver County has some of the lowest income and property tax rates in the state. And as Commissioner Hans mentioned, there's a .005 decrease from .932 to .927 to the property tax rate in the budget presented tonight. This is the second year in a row that the board has lowered the property tax rate. Well, how do we use the money? We use it for education, mainly the public schools, but also for the College of Southern Maryland. We use it for public safety, the sheriff's office, the detention center, the 911 center. These are just some of the many parts that help keep Calver County safe. We use it for roads. Public Works maintains about 470 miles of county roads. And we use it for the community, libraries, senior centers, parks, museums, the health department, and other services. So in the chart that you see, 90% of the general fund revenues come from property and income taxes. That has been accounted back to at least 2010. So nine in 10 of the general fund dollars we're discussing tonight come from these two sources. This is a representation of the general fund expenditures. Forty-four percent of the general fund goes to the county's public schools. Forty-one of the 44% is for operating expenses. The remaining is for debt services associated with capital improvements and funding for other post-employment benefits. Commissioner Hans also mentioned that the budget increased from last year about $8.9 million. I will walk you through some of the major changes. The increase in the sheriff's office expenditures is driven by growth in staffing, as well as capital outlay expenditures for required equipment and vehicles. For pension contributions and health insurance, the increase can be linked to increase in county staff, which includes 16 new positions for the career EMS department. For highway maintenance, there was an increase in contracted services and capital outlay. Due to aging and worn equipment, the department has items recommended for replacement this year. They have large pieces of specialized equipment which are costly to replace. Technology services added two cybersecurity positions, as well as expanded to 40-hour a week for technical staff. As everyone has seen in the news lately, we need to be vigilant to protect against unauthorized access to our networks and our data. The last area I would like to discuss is the changes from the staff recommended that we, budget that we presented in March to the commissioner's budget here tonight. For both revenues and expenditures, we revised and refined our estimates based on current information, which, as Tim mentioned, does change frequently. For revenue, the significant changes were in income tax and franchise tax. For expenditures, we adjusted salaries, debt, pension and insurance, and various other expense categories. The other line listed on this slide contains a 3% reduction to all general fund operating expenses. This reduction was initiated to help offset increase in other cost areas. That completes the review of the general fund. I will now turn things over to Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Good evening. I'll be discussing some changes to the fees for planning and zoning, which includes inspections and permits. Plan review, permit, and inspection fees are charged to offset staff time and expended county resources. The cost is paid by the applicant for services they will be receiving. The current fee schedule was adopted last year by resolution as part of the FY21 budget process, and they became effective in July of 2020. Since then, staff has identified several fees that were omitted from the list and other fees that were shown incorrectly. Note that the omitted fees have continued to be collected as required by state law and by the Calver County zoning ordinance. The proposed revisions to the fee schedule were presented to the Board of County Commissioners at a work session on April 13th of this year. The complete list of fees, including the proposed revisions which are shown in red font, can be found in the FY2022 budget online under the Fees and Tax Rates Appendix. The revised fees include correcting a fee for the consultant review of communication tower permits, an adjusted fee for communication tower applications for consideration by the Board of Appeals, a reduced fee for agricultural land preservation review. Corrected, um, corrections were made to the critical area mitigation fees in lieu. And then we added those additional fees I mentioned earlier that were previously admitted. Up next to present is Sharon Strand, Deputy Director of Accounting.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Strand, the Deputy Director of Accounting, and I'm gonna present the budgets for the water, sewer, and solid waste funds. These two funds are enterprise funds, which mean they are run like a business and are expected to pay for their own operations. These funds operate on revenues earned by charging capital connection fees and user fees for water and sewer, and tip fees, excise taxes, and solid waste fees for solid waste customers. Water and sewer serves the major town centers in Prince Frederick and Solomon's, as well as many smaller communities throughout the county. There are 19 water systems and seven wastewater systems in the county. The water and sewer funds summary budget is shown on the screen. As you can see, the fund is forecasting a slight increase of 2.4% or $281,169. This budget is based on the rates currently in effect. For revenue, the major changes were decreasing other revenue and capital connections, and that's due to lower projections of new connections to the water and sewer systems. The prior year fund balance line item of $210,493 is being used to balance the budget. Staff will address this deficit with the VOCC in the upcoming months. For expenses, salary and benefit increases are primarily due to the step that was approved by the VOCC for county employees along with one new position. The operating line item increase is mostly comprised for chemicals for plant operations, lab resources, and aging infrastructure maintenance. The capital outlay decrease is due to a reduction of large purchase requests for FY2022. The debt service decrease is due to the refunding of bonds that occurred in October of 2020. And finally, the maintenance reserve decrease is reduced in FY22. And this is typically where we apply surplus fund for future maintenance costs. But due to this year's operating increases, we lowered this line item for this year's budget. The solid waste and recycling fund. This fund is used to run the county landfill at appeal and the six resident convenience centers or compactor sites. This fund budget is increasing by $47,838 or .33%. The other, the other revenue increase of 169.8% is related to interest income and interest and penalties the fund is projected to receive in FY2022. The use of the fund balance line item increase is being used to segregate prior year fund balance for equipment reserve, which is shown below in the expense section. This reserve is used to set aside funds for large purposes for future budget and future needs. The expense increase for salaries, again, is due to the step that was approved for county employees and the addition of one new position. The capital outlay decrease is due to a reduction of large purchase requests for '22. And the debt service drop is due to the refunding of bonds in October 2020. This is the budget intended to cover the planned increases in the solid waste fee structure. There's a tip fee increase planned for FY2022 based on the Consumer Price Index as required by our contract with Waste Management. The fee increase per ton are as follows. For residential, the increase is from $74.93 to $75.65 per ton. And for commercial, the fees are increasing from $83.25 to $84.05 per ton. These rates are also shown on the scheduled fees page in the budget document. In addition to the tip revenues, county businesses and residents pay a solid waste fee to support the fund, which is billed on the county tax bill. The plan is to raise the fee by $3 per dwelling from $145 to $148 to fund improvements to the recycling program. Now I would like to turn the presentation over to Veronica Atkinson, our Capital Projects Analyst.
Good evening, Veronica Atkinson, Capital Projects Analyst. My slide concentrates on the six-year capital improvement plan for the county. Even though the capital improvement plan, CIP, covers a period of six years, only the first year of the plan is adopted or funded by the board, that would be FY22. The remaining five years are for planning purposes only. The table on this slide breaks down the six-year expenses by functional department. The column highlighted in yellow reflects the FY22 CIP, which totals $81,626,367. The revenue sources for FY22 are county funding, which is pay-go, excise tax, and user fees at 14.1 million or 17%. Debt funding, our bonds, 37.8 million or 46%. Grants, private funding, low-interest loans accounts for 29.5 million or 36% of FY22's total. The six-year CIP is $367,817,887. The revenue sources for the six-year CIP are county funding at 74.4 million or 21%. Debt funding is 185.4 million or 50%. And our grants, private funds, and low-interest loans contribute to 105.9 million and make up 29% of that six-year total funding. This concludes Finance and Budget's presentation. Our next presenter is Dr. Curry, Superintendent of Calver County Schools.
Thank you very much. Dan Curry here for Calver County Schools. Uh, we first should point out that, um, this is the Board of Education's, uh, final budget as presented to the county commissioners. And it includes no new positions during this, uh, as we put together this budget. We certainly always have a need and request for more budget, uh, to budget more staff, but there are no new staff. It does include new negotiated salaries, uh, for three, our three bargaining groups. We, um, are pleased to announce that our newly negotiated contracts with our three bargaining groups has led to a closing out of all back steps. As we work through these, uh, next couple of years, there will be no more, uh, steps yet owed, and we will be getting caught up. It also includes additional digital resources, additional print resources for elementary school, replacement textbooks. Yes, we do still, we use textbooks for AP literature, AP language, advanced mathematics, and world history. We're gonna upgrade our materials for our Project Lead the Way program in engineering and biomedical. We'll have, uh, new resources for gifted and advanced learners, and we'll have resources and manipulatives for elementary science and math. Next slide. So this is our only next slide. It shows that, uh, there's not a whole lot of gain from the state, uh, for next school year. Only about $268,000 more from the state, not a whole lot more from, uh, keep in mind, this is unrestricted revenue. So when we're talking about federal dollars, we do get more federal dollars than is listed here, but that is restricted. Our local use of fund balance is the big one. The Board of Education has agreed that we'll use some of our rainy day fund, because indeed, if there ever was a rainy day, this year is it. We lost enrollment, but we expect to gain them back, so we're not going to reduce staff. Uh, and we're gonna maintain the staff that we need to get that enrollment back. Uh, finally, our request to the county for operating budget for next year is $1 more than the previous year. It is 134,705, 134,705,250, just $1 more than the previous year. And that is an extent of the Board of Education request. Thank you.
Thank you all. So Counselor, do we have any public comment?
We'll ask anybody that is on the line, uh, to please press star nine to raise your hand. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number. When called, please identify yourself by name and address, and whether you are speaking as the designated representative of a group, a group may only have one, or as an individual. And your time will be given five minutes if you're the designated representative of a group, or two minutes if you are speaking as an individual. So please press star nine to raise your hand.
Caller with phone number Indian5760, we're ready to take your comment.
Of course, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself caller.
Good evening. This is Maureen Murphy at the College of Southern Maryland. I am just here listening to this budget discussion, and I am hoping that the commissioners take under consideration our request for this year. This has been a tough year. We have been very fiscally prudent over this year. Our request is a modest one, and it will help go a long way to serve the neediest students in Calver County. I thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could please identify the next caller who has their hand raised. Thank you. If we could please identify the next caller who has their hand raised.
There are no more callers that wish to speak.
Thank you. Mr. President, I believe we do have someone in the room that could...
So is there someone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Please come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. Lieutenant Colonel Dave McDowell, Assistant Sheriff. Just wanted to let the board know that we are grateful for the growth and opportunity that you provided for us this year with the extra staffing that was much needed in deputies and some civilian personnel as well. And I just ask, moving forward, as you will decide how to spend funds, that you do keep in mind that the sheriff's office is not on par with our counterparts in Southern Maryland. Both Charles and St. Mary's far exceed us in pay, while our missions are the same, and we actually train at the same academy. So I know that you have a lot of tough decisions to make, and when you consider pay increases for deputies and correctional deputies, I also ask that you include county employees in general. We all know that without staff, it just doesn't get done. So I thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have any other speakers in the audience? All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The CSM budget, the annual support and the scholarship program, where are we in that?
So we have been able to find the funds to cover the request for $92,000, I believe it is, for their budget.
$92,939.
About $93,000.
And scholarship.
And there's a request for the audience viewing, there's been a request from CSM for tuition assistance, a program that they started this year because of COVID. The cost for that program is $225,000. The college has asked if we can continue that program for one more year for them, so that's a one-time cost. We believe that we can also find the funds to cover that scholarship through some other sources other than general funds. Correct, Dr. Hayden?
I know that, I believe, St. Mary's County is using ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act that's just getting to the counties to pay for the scholarship. I want to work with them to understand their view on that as they read the criteria of how that money's used. But hopefully, that would be the source for the scholarships.
So it's our understanding today, we do have general fund revenues to cover the 90, almost $93,000, and we do believe there's an opportunity to cover the $225,000 for the scholarship tuition assistance program.
Mr. President, I suggest no later than our next meeting of next Tuesday that this be confirmed by source and by amount. This is the budget we're going to vote on in two weeks for adoption.
Well, I believe it's already been confirmed we have the money, right?
The $92,000 for sure. It's the $225,000.
We can find the $225,000, Commissioner, and maybe as a recommendation, if we take it from the general funds for now, and then when, we'll be coming to you with a $9 million budget adjustment to use that American Rescue Plan money, and we can make this part of that.
So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the funds tonight for the $225,000 and the $92,939.
Second, Mr. President.
So I have a motion on the floor that we increase the current budget proposal by $92,939 for CSM, and that we approve the tuition assistance program for one year for $225,000. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Is there any other items before us? So just, we need a motion?
Yes, I can provide a motion.
Mr. President, before we vote on the budget, I'm going to support the budget, but you know, as we've seen the CIP...
You're not voting on the budget tonight. Bring that back on to your name.
Oh, okay.
We're just setting the record.
Okay, okay. But I do want to bring up that, you did see how the CIP, we talked about it earlier, is loaded. So I do want us to sit down and really dissect how we go about that, because you know, I've said it before, I don't think there's any free lunches, and what we saw this year was an anomaly. There was initial talks, if you remember, Director Hayden, that we could have potentially been down millions of dollars in income tax. So we didn't know that was coming, so that, I don't want to set us up for failure. And I know we do out six years. I don't know if we need to extend that. I don't know. But I think we need a work session of, from all departments, of how we go about this. And you know, we even alluded to that earlier, you know, it was philosophy about how to do things. And I think we do need to come up with something, because I do, I am fearful of what the next couple of years could be. I just don't think the federal government can keep doling out money like that. I just, it's not sustainable. And we've said it before, you know, they don't cut the vote-getting stuff. They never cut education, they don't cut, but they cut infrastructure, and we're going to see it. You know, we're going to see little pockets here, my personal belief. So I just want to, that we have a session on that and get a way we go about it for not just us, but even future boards to have something to go by.
Just for the viewing public, you know, as Commissioner Hart alluded to, the budget is the hardest thing we do. You know, when you sit in this chair, there are lots of citizen wants. It depends on, you know, where you are in your life, what your wants are, whether it's education, recreation, or senior needs.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. There are so many needs. And as Commissioner Hart also mentioned, you know, the CIP, if you have the time, you should take a look at that. You know, when you look at the education portion of CIP, it's not just building schools. It's infrastructure repairs, because for those of you that were here in the late 80s and early 90s, we built a new school every year and couldn't keep up. But those schools are now 35, are getting to 40 years old, and then this structure and those buildings is starting to fall apart. And when you replace an HVAC system in a school, it's not a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's a couple million dollars. And you start adding those all together, and those are things that you almost have to do.
To a million dollars just to design the system.
It's a million dollars every time you design one. Exactly right.
And I believe you come back, what are we spending, $5 million in just maintenance? And that's not included when you see that figure, that 43%, so yeah.
So we are fortunate, you know, you heard Superintendent Curry say that the school board only asked for a dollar more. I know that in Charles County, that school board asked for $13 million more. So we are, we want to thank the school board for doing their due diligence and holding the line for that. So, but if you have time, and I know it's a lot, it's very interesting to see where the dollars all go and the need or wants that are out there.
Maybe, I'm sorry.
Maybe Director Hayden could answer this question, but can you explain the reasoning behind the dollar more to the school board?
The, so the state, schools are funded by maintenance of effort calculations. Whatever you funded per student last year, you have to fund that same amount per student this year.
Right.
With the pandemic, the Board of Education lost an unprecedented 681 students. Potentially, our maintenance of effort with that calculation, we would have lowered our funding to the school board by about $6 million. The state passed a law this year to say, well, no, you can't, you have to use an average of a couple of years, which changed the calculation. But they also said, we'll ignore that calculation, and we won't hold you to maintenance of effort. We'll give you a whole harmless grant of, for our local school board, it was 5.3 million, I think. And our dollar allows them to get the 5.3 million. We had to fund it more than last year, and the dollars more than last year.
The 5.3 million from the state.
5.3 million from the state.
And what about the 2.5 million that they're talking of, that people are sending us emails about?
The calculation for maintenance of effort for '22, the budget year we're discussing, changed. And instead of just taking into account the 681 student decline, the number they use in aver, they ignore the September 30, 2020 enrollment, which was the 681 down. I think they take the 18, 19...
Three years.
Three years, and to get an average, and that average, when you do the calculation, instead of being $6 million down, it would be $2.5 million. It's actually $2,262,000.
But we're required to do that, right?
We are, we were legally able to decrease the funding to the school by $2,262,000. Instead, we gave them the dollar.
Right.
And they get the $5.3 million from the state because of the dollar.
Okay, good. I couldn't explain that to everybody, like you did. Thank you.
Just touching back on the CIP, you know, to where Commissioner Hand said, it's a 15-year loan, basically. So imagine going out buying a car and taking out a 15-year loan. Well, that car is probably not going to last 15 years. And unfortunately, we do have some things that don't go 15 years, but you're unable to do them out of the general fund, out of general budget sometimes. So it's easy to start building these projects, and then you look back, and I mean, there's a certain project, I won't talk about it, because everybody's heard me talk about it before. I can't wait for it's paid off. I'm going to throw a party when it's paid off, because it's just, some things just, and they keep costing. You know, it's not like you buy it and, or you build it and it's done. It just keeps costing and costing.
You're always going to have, so.
Yeah, it's like that guy in the horror movie. You blow him up, he comes back. You run him with a car, he comes back. I mean, some of these things are just, they're necessary evils, but the funds don't stop, so that's, you know.
That's, Mr. President, while we're on this thing and reviewing a couple items, the CSM budget needs to be either codified in county language or administratively, that it shall be included on an annual basis and come up with the rate of which to calculate that.
Maybe another formula.
It's a simple one of the last three running, three years of running average plus the cost of the Consumer Price Index. That is the easy way to do it, to start off with and see if that does. But we need to get that into the budget as a constant continuing item, so it comes up on the front end and not here two weeks before we do the adoption of it.
It makes it easier for budgeting purposes as well, too. You know what you're walking into. It's...
Sure. I mean, the college is not only educating our kids and giving them a chance in the higher academics, but those that are returning too from the workforce to retool for other jobs, especially after the calamity that we had in 2020 with the pandemic. It's a critical piece of infrastructure, both economically...
We have that in our backyard.
Economically and academically, absolutely.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to hold the record open until the close of business on June 7, and at that time, take action to adopt the FY2022 budget on Tuesday, June 8, 2021.
Second.
So can I ask that we change that date to June 3, which I believe is a Thursday? Because if we hold the record open until June 7, it doesn't give staff much time to pull together those comments.
Second. You said 7.
June 3.
Yeah, but you wanted...
Just to hold the record open is what he's getting to.
Yes, until June 3.
Cut the record off at a certain point where it gives staff opportunity to finish off and bring the budget to us on June 8 for adoption.
Okay.
Just give staff those two days to get comments, depending on how many comments they get, get them ready for us.
Mr. President, I'll amend my motion inclusive of verbiage to June 3 being the close of business.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second that we hold the record open until June 3, close of business, and that we adopt the budget on June 8 at our regular scheduled meeting.
Oh, until Tuesday.
Tuesday. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. So I want to thank staff, especially Director Hayden and his staff, all the work they've done pulling this budget together. Unfortunately, the budget process never ends. Soon as we get this one adopted, we start closing out, and we'll start working on the new budget in September, I think. So it never ends. But I do want to thank Director Hayden and all of his staff for all their work pulling this together. It's not an easy task, so appreciate all that hard work. Thank everybody that tuned in tonight. We look forward to your comments. Please get your comments in by June 3. If you have questions, just contact their offices, and we'll try to get you answers before that time. So with that, Chair Maritain, have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for tuning in.